Call the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission to order for Monday, October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'll record that everybody but Mr. Richardson are present. Mr. Richardson is excused. This time we'll move to Article Two, the Budge of Allegiance. Please stand if you can.
I'm the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Flags keep moving out of.
Yeah, it's like they moved us.
I like them there. I think it's a great spot.
Uh, at this time, I will hear a motion to approve the current agenda.
So move.
Move by member Riss, supported by member Ringo. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, here we go. We'll move to Article Four. Does anybody wish to disclose a conflict of interest? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Article Five, approve the minutes from the October sixteenth meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Made by Secretary Ango.
I have one small edit, if I may. I don't know if I'm allowed to.
Yeah.
So I was not present. I was noted as excused.
Okay.
Can I, could it be notated somehow that I was present virtually?
I don't think that counts as a process.
Yeah. It doesn't. Yeah, because.
I don't know if it could be notated, like so, absences were virtual.
Okay.
Yeah. We could make a mention under.
Visitors.
Oh, yeah, visitors that Bruno was.
Because you're present as a visitor.
Yeah.
Yep. Oh, what about the time I was gone and did that?
That was it. That was just my question. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll make an edit that, uh, remember now was a visitor, uh, personally. Okay, do I hear support?
Support.
Support made by member Nordhook. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, we'll move forward. Uh, let's go to Article Six, acknowledge any visitors who are wishing to speak. We do have a public hearing in the Dozema case, so if you're here for that, you can wait. Maddie, anybody in online? All right, we'll move on. Article Seven, case number twenty-three dash three seven nine three Dozema.
We kept going to look at the minutes. I also got the minutes on the same thing.
Sorry, my bad.
Good. And just the exact.
For the end of the curtain.
Hey, we have, the applicant was Bruce Dozema, but Eric, did you say Bauer? Eric Bauer is present as the homeowner this evening. Um, we have an application at fifty-four oh seven Butrick Avenue in our R one district for an accessory building exceeding eight hundred and thirty-two square feet. Um, this is on a seven point three acre parcel and they are proposing a one hundred by thirty-six foot, not inches, that should say under B, uh, for thirty-six hundred square foot pole barn. Uh, the placement of the barn is in their front yard, but because they're a waterfront property, we do have an exception in our ordinance that they are allowed to have their barn in their front yard. The site plan indicates that the setbacks are sixty-five feet from the north, a hundred and eighty feet from the west or the water, and over a thousand feet from the east property line, and then sixty feet from the south property line. Um, with the proposed height of twenty-two feet to the midpoint, that does meet all of our setback standards for placement. Um, so they are looking to build this barn as storage for personal items. They mentioned having boats, cars, ATVs, and a camper, um, and anything smaller wouldn't be able to fit the items they're looking to store. They don't currently have an existing accessory building, um, although they would be approved for more than one, uh, because of their acreage. Uh, so when we looked at the findings of fact for considering approval of the special use permit, uh, the proposed location, um, and nature of their parcel in general, it's just a large parcel that they also owned the parcel to the north. Um, and there's not really neighbors in the near vicinity. Um, it probably wouldn't even be visible from other properties. Um, so we didn't see that it would impact neighbors negatively. We also didn't receive any letters from any neighbors with concerns. Um, when we look at the design of the building, he has given architectural features to the building that make it, uh, appeared to be more of a residential building, um, although it will be, uh, a mix of materials. They will be using the existing drive on the property, but you can see on their site plan, they have added, um, an approach that would be concrete. With all of these considerations, including, uh, neighboring property owners' accessory building sizes, uh, this would be on the larger size, but because of the other factors, I was comfortable recommending the building for approval. Um, with our conditions that it's not used to operate a business, that they don't use it as a dwelling, um, and that their lighting standards would meet our township standards as well.
Awesome. Does anybody have any questions, member Ringo?
Maddie, is page nine supposed to be the site plan for this?
Can I see what you're looking at?
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the driveway and then there's a, it shows the lot and then the driveway and the rough sketch of.
This?
No.
No.
No, that's boundary survey.
Oh, I also have a copy of that.
It's not in the packet.
That one is not in the packet?
Correct. It's not.
You have this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like the one you have, though. Did you, are you able? Can you put that one on the screen again, so we can see it?
Oh, yeah.
Great, thank you. Oh. That's better.
Yeah. Okay, I like that better. That's, that's much nicer.
So, yeah, we did find that the utilities wouldn't be in the way of the building.
Right.
And the.
This makes more sense.
Lots of the more is the lot above the dotted line.
Yeah, so there's a private drive, uh, for easements for access to, I believe, your property and one other or a couple other properties. The applicant could maybe answer.
Correct. Can you give us the dimensions that are on this new print? You put up, I can't read that.
It's like a hundred by.
It's like thirty-eight by a hundred.
Thirty-six. I'm sorry, the setback dimensions.
Oh.
So it's sixty-five from the north.
Okay.
Property line, a hundred and eleven feet from the home, and then sixty feet from the south property line, and then to the east, it would be over a thousand feet.
Thank you for identifying the drained building, so.
Yes, be sure to ask for those now since you guys.
Thank you. Glad somebody's doing that after nine years.
I kind of have one. At, at what point do, uh, we run stuff like this by the fire department? I mean, if, if they report a fire, at some point, does the fire department expect to find a thirty-six hundred square foot barn with five vehicles with gas in them? Like, this, this is a different order of magnitude of a calling it a house fire.
So typically, the fire department is notified of commercial properties and they review all those applications for us. I believe the private drive that they would have existing would require the easement to be accessible by a fire engine. I don't know if Brian can speak to anything else.
In terms of just the building, so this would have to go through the building permit process. I don't know for sure, but typically when there's a permit for something large scale, I mean, one of our fire inspectors reviews most building permits. Cause that's when I would think it would be brought to their attention.
And do we know is this drive grandfathered or does it meet our current standards? This private drive, you said it's a thousand feet.
I did not review the full product drive, but I could look into, or the.
I just see, the reason I'm wondering, I, I see like a, he appears to have a circle drive, like, to the south of his property, and it looks like there's maybe another circle drive with a, I don't know, a boat launch.
It does look on a survey to be a sixty-six foot wide easement, um, which would lead me to believe it does meet our standards, because that's the typical requirement, but I don't know about if it's paved a whole way, the applicant might be able to answer that question.
Well, why don't we bring the applicant forward? We can ask questions.
I know that I can answer that one, but I can tell you that, um.
You could state your name.
Oh, sorry, um, I'm Eric Bauer.
Okay, and this is your, your home?
It is.
All right, thank you.
The, um, so what I can tell you is to the north, that circle drive, there's actually a connection between those two driveways, um, right in front of our house. Trying to see a good way I can.
It's probably on the other one, the other, uh, the survey map.
So you're here.
Yeah.
This comes around and goes up the driveway this way as well. So there's plenty of room to, to come down here and come around back up the other piece of the driveway.
It's a big circle.
Uh, and the fire department knows our property really well. They often do their, uh, training, it water training, right off of that boat launch. Um, I've got some friends on the, in the fire department and they, we let them use that.
Thank you.
For the water rescue stuff.
Good.
Does Dr. McDonald still, um, so there's a, to the east of you and the house up, up the hill?
What was his name?
Tom, um.
Oh, Tom Arnold.
Tom Stevenson.
Tom Stevens.
Tom Stevens.
He does not. No, he's moved, uh, out to Rockford, I think. Um, he and his wife. Uh, nice couple, um, moved in up there. Um, I forget their last name, Chamberlain. Uh, I went to high school with, uh, Mrs. Chamberlain.
And you haven't had any comments from any of the neighbors about this?
No, they, uh, no, I'm sure they'd be supportive, especially, yeah, like the Chamberlains at the top. We're good friends with the Renucci's, um, uh, over in Anderson was the next one over. I think that's far enough away. They won't really see much. Um, and I have not met that neighbor yet. Uh, they're, they just moved in the last couple of weeks. Any other questions for the applicant?
In terms of, um, like screening, so it looks pretty wooded. I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to drive by. How much clearing would you do? Would it, if someone were to move next door, where it looks like there's a lot currently, would it still be screened by trees? Are you planning on clearing all around it?
Oh, no, it would still be screened by trees. We would clear just the area that we'd be working and then anything that would be troublesome to fall towards it. Um, but no, we're big on, it's all wooded that entire stretch.
It, it looked like you've already done some clearing in that area. Is that essentially the area?
That is the only area that'll be cleared.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions to the applicant? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody have any discussion?
But you want to go?
Make a motion.
Public hearing, right?
Open.
But we should probably open it and then close it.
Yeah.
Uh, can you hear a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion to open a public hearing.
Motion made by, uh, by, by Joe, sorry, second, supported, uh, I don't know. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, we'll be in a hearing. Anybody that is online? Your motion to close.
So move.
Support.
Uh, Scott, member Rissy, uh, makes a motion. Member Ringo supports. All those in favor to close public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed. Now, do we want to have any discussion or bring names?
It's my only concern is, and it's probably going to be his, I mean, it's just, it's big, right? I mean, it's bigger than this house. Um, but Maddie said that he could actually have two, uh, accessory buildings. You've got two buildings across the street that are five thousand and three thousand already. So, I mean, it's, it's wooded, it's out in the middle of nowhere.
Has a huge yard.
You know, I mean.
Big area.
Never let it be said that, you know, letting the fire department use your property for training is not, that shouldn't, should carry a little weight too, in my opinion, but.
Yes, I, 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 I tend to be a kind of broken record on this topic, but this is over four times the eight thirty-two. It's almost one and a half times the house. This is a giant structure.
Yeah.
But that gives me pause.
But he could have two twenty-five hundred square feet or structures, or two, two thousand square feet, you know, that are even more.
Yeah, I, I, I guess.
Can I?
We go back to that. So we always put the conditional that it's not for rental and not for storing friends' equipment and, you know, not the community. How do we enforce that? Like, at some point, these are starting to look really.
That's what Maddie does. She is our enforcement officer, so.
So we also get the applicant on the record. They're stating.
I think, I think we can. The applicant being willing to step forward and attest that it will only be used for his gear.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I've got five drivers in the house right now.
Yeah.
So it, this is where a lot of the cars, yeah, this is where a lot of the cars will be stored. We have our snowplow, uh, a boat and an RV. That's really what it's going to be used for, a couple of snowmobiles. I mean, it's our own stuff. I don't have any intentions to use it for anything else.
Not going to run a business there?
No, certainly not.
People sleeping out there?
Nope.
All right, uh, member Rissy has a question for you.
Uh, and Maddie may have covered this in her staff report and overlooked it, but, uh, the other structure that you have out there, that temporary, uh, is that going to come down when this goes up?
Yes, for sure. Yeah. Um, yeah, that was the other option, was to buy a bunch of those tents, so.
No, I, I, I would much rather see this than those, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. All right, I hear a motion.
Uh, with case number twenty-three dash three seven nine three fifty-four oh seven Butrick, I would, uh, make the motion to, uh, approve the type one special use permit for the accessory building with the special conditions that, uh, it cannot be used for living space or to run a business and, uh, any outdoor lighting will need to adhere to the Cascade Township zoning standards. Support.
Motion made by member Rissy, the following conditions, supported by member Nordhook. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. All right, the motion carries. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So happy.
And thanks for letting the fire department train over there.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to Article Eight, master plan amendments. I see we have some guests. Emma here, welcome back.
Thank you.
Holy cow. Oh, that's a serious storage.
It was a desire to table this, uh, by a member who is absent. Does anybody, uh, wish to make a motion there?
Uh, I do not.
I do not.
Hearing none, we'll continue. Just wanted it on the record that we put the opportunity there.
Yeah, we were planning mostly to recap and confirm what was discussed at the workshop. Um, we're not.
Excellent.
Definitely not asking for any votes or anything tonight, so.
I think member Bruno has some things that he would like to review with you based on what I've seen him even also.
This would not be the last discussion anyways, so.
Good. I, I know that our parks director has, uh, our, you know, is definitely a desire to hear what you're up to and, and have some input on the parks.
Okay. We can, uh.
Am I expressing that right, Ryan?
I believe so. That's very.
She even perhaps felt left out, so if you could, she works at the township building, if you could schedule some time during the day, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely, we can do that.
Yeah, Mally, she just has data that we don't in terms of some of the stuff like that that she's looked at.
I screamed one off.
And, and I don't want to like, in some of it, she expressed like she's not sure how, uh, public it should be, I guess. So it'd be, it'd be good for you to maybe meet with her and understand.
Yeah, yeah, we can absolutely, A, we'll make sure we meet with the, the purpose of our target areas, using phrasing that way, sort of as circles. Is to, is that they can get bigger and smaller and therefore less and more specific as to the actual piece of land we might be looking at. And, uh, give us the flexibility in the future.
Yeah, let you talk to her and I think formulate a plan between the three of you.
Trying to go to that screen.
I was worried. To me, it's not like you look at it anyway.
Could you already try the toggle?
All right.
Hey, 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 Dusty Norman, I guess something to say.
Uh, yeah, I talked to, uh, chief majors about the multi-story buildings. The multi-story buildings, and he said that, uh, right now we have a share agreement with like the jury and stuff. If we start getting more three or four story buildings, he needs a ladder truck.
What's the VGA?
Two million. So before we start approving four and five story buildings, we've got to factor that.
I know, exactly.
It's great data.
That could be part of the deal.
Yeah, that could be part of the.
We would love to have one that says, thank you.
Yes.
We're just putting it out there that that is a concern that has.
Good data.
So, so where is the limit? Two or three we're good and more than three we're not?
More than three we're not.
Is it, is it three?
Sorry.
I just want to know where the cutoff is.
We can't have forty-three bill, three-story buildings. We don't have a ladder truck.
Yeah.
So we're using share services.
Is that for over three though?
He's, you, yeah, we can have four and five story buildings. You're, you're done until you get a ladder truck.
At what point do we need the ladder truck? At two or three?
I heard four.
Over three.
Thank you.
So anything over two.
I heard over three.
Two.
He just said.
Four was the, we can't, we can't do four without a ladder.
We can't.
Can't do four without.
Can we do three?
We have shared agreements, but, you know, for three, put up thirty, well, three story buildings, we need a ladder usually.
So at three, we do, so we can only go out two without buying a ladder. It's not working.
No, it's my understanding, we can do two now. We can do three with a shared service with somebody else, as long as we don't go crazy with a bunch of threes. If we do any fours, we got to have a ladder truck.
Correct.
That's, that's my understanding of what you just said.
It, it, because we have three story buildings now, but I think the proliferate too much understood because it's shared resources.
Right.
There's only so many resources outside the town.
Correct.
And at four stories, they say.
Uh-uh.
Yeah.
The Sheraton is. Says a little bit, I remember, I think it was a concern that came up. I think that's the only.
Sorry.
No, had to be redeveloped.
Just, uh, get it and then reset.
Need a circle there.
Our point doesn't work.
Oh, uh, Timmy, another thing is, um, export vice chairman actually asked me when the tour of the news, um, Fire Station. Do you know anything about that? Thursday.
It's five to seven, but there's a real.
Why is it?
Our preview for you guys.
Wow, really?
First.
You set that up for us? Look at that. Braced it.
When do we get our invite?
Right now.
Consider yourself invited.
There's fires.
Really?
You have to go to the office.
So do we go in there at four thirty then? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, you guys can go at four thirty.
It's this Thursday? And then if you start.
I think it says.
So I won't have to ask if we're going to get like a, a lift on the ladder. We don't have one.
What?
You can save it. I was trying to make comedy while I was working. I said, so I don't have to ask if I'm going to get a lift on the ladder, because we don't have one.
Can you imagine if a fire station was three stories and that burned? What would we do?
Save the PDF onto this.
We would be embarrassed.
We're good on. Training tower.
Especially with a main out of brick.
Yeah, that's true.
Everything good with it?
Okay, so why they're famous.
Hey. Cover it. To me, is I see. And.
To me, the I T.
Yep.
Trust me.
Ah, so.
Well, there's no reason.
We're over here in the system is going to be upgraded.
All right, look at that.
Perfect.
Um.
Might go to the topics.
Perfect. Um, so this, as Chris just mentioned, uh, we have put together a few slides that are, uh, an open discussion and to confirm and uh, reiterate our previous discussions thus far, um, with a quick note that we will get together with the parks director to make sure that everything from that perspective is aligned. Um, and then kind of talk about, uh, what the next steps are going to be and, and what future discussions are going to look like. Um, so.
Chief majors too, just.
Yeah.
Let's get a strong understanding of what we need and, you know, what the enrichment program or a ladder.
Wait, are you saying that wasn't rock solid?
That's what they were saying.
It sounded pretty certain to me.
We don't.
I understood what you were saying.
Yeah, I know you did. We don't want our trustee to be in.
We don't want him to have that life.
Um, so for this evening, we will discuss, uh, green space preservation, as we had discussed last month, that rather than utilizing the term farmland preservation, we are going to kind of shift toward green space preservation um, to encompass more than just farmland areas. Um, Cascade Village, what that boundary looks like, what projects are perhaps in the hopper for that. Um, what that might translate to for how other boards and commissions, uh, will work together for implementation of that vision. Um, key projects, boundaries, all that. Um, and then our, uh, the mixed use areas, um, are the mixed use designations on the future land use map, twenty-eighth Street Corridor, Fourth Corners area. Uh, Star, uh, the Star Glenwood, um, areas and, and so forth. And also, um, feel free to, you know, jump in and, and stop us while we're talking too, that, you know, we kind of envision this to be a free flowing discussion. If you could please advance the slide.
Can I jump in right immediately? So I think most of them I kind of follow, but the, one of the mixed uses is called community mixed use. Can we, is it possible to have a convention and stick with it? Maybe like, some of them are based on streets, kind of the, the major streets. Some of them are based on, I think, use, like ones are Meyer mixed use. And then there's one that's just community mixed use. So why the word community and not something more?
Yeah, so the community mixed use is a current designation that you already have in your future land use map and plan. Um, we'd be happy to look for, like, look further into it and, and uh, cut, if a rebranding or, uh, review of that.
From the old map. Shoddy at best.
Noted.
Yeah, that's the Arboretum Office Park area.
Exactly. So can we just call it Arboretum?
Okay.
Uh, because the one place we haven't really talked about, you guys, are, in our book, we lose from, but it's the Arboretum Office Park. Unlike some of the others, it, it doesn't seem likely to see repot. Right.
True.
It's, those are, there's a very high quality.
It just caught me. I like parallelism, so I wasn't saying we need to spend time on it, but it would be nice if.
It is, it's already a lot, and we should probably have a clear, and, and I think actually we went with some of those geographic designations as a way to make it less computer. So if we change that to Arboretum Watermark, which is then.
Um, and we'll get into this fervor as well as, as we move forward through the presentation, but I should also note too that the utility service boundary, how it kind of goes, um, through the airport property there, um, that was changed and designed to encompass what is already connected. Um, so just to note that too, that the last map, it wasn't very clear on what was included and what wasn't, so that was changed to kind of incorporate that, just to note. Um, any other comments on the overall map and then we'll, we'll narrow down into the, the nitty gritty of it as, as we move forward?
Ryan, didn't you have some changes in the map?
I did, but I wasn't sure if it's nitty gritty or overall, so I'm not sure.
So.
Your changes were nitty gritty.
Were they the ones that were submitted via email?
Yes.
Okay, so a few of those have already been implemented, um, in this draft that you see on the presentation here. You just didn't get it. I just didn't send it out because I didn't update it until like earlier this afternoon, and I thought it would create confusion with a bunch of drafts flying around. So just note that as we move forward, though, a few of those have already been incorporated, such as the cemetery.
Be laboring of them until I see if some were missed and then we'll keep going.
Or are there any you want to disclose that were missed intentionally?
Oh, sure. Or no, not intentionally. Some that were.
Yeah, some.
No, uh, not necessarily. So, um, the, the township on parkland, um, that is along Cascade Road that was missed. Um, that was included as Cascade Village and now it is included as public, uh, semi-public. Um, and then there's a cemetery along Thornapple Drive, Thornapple River Drive, um, that was just missed. Um, and that was, I believe, previously.
Didn't change. Is that right?
Correct.
All right, cool.
Thank you.
Uh, green space preservation. This is weird. I keep thinking, no, I keep thinking that I'm controlling it, but I'm not. Okay. Um, so a few notes on, did you have a question? Uh, a few notes on green space, um, uh, preservation, um, as per our discussion last month and, and month prior. Um, for some ideas related to green space protection program, um, renaming and reviewing the rural residential future land use category and ARC zoning district um, to rural preservation to, um, further coincide with the future land use designation. Um, to rural preservation to, um, further coincide with the future land use designation. Um, which would then be further addressed during the draft zoning plan once we get to that stage. Um. And as we had talked about a month or so, two months or so ago, um, about that sliding scale. Idea, um, for lot splits within the farmland preservation, um, zoning district and designation. Um, with the housing density of approximately one dwelling unit per ten acres, but then allowing splits up to hundred, um, at a hundred thousand square foot minimum. And then requiring, requiring the rest of that excess land, um, to be preserved or farmed or open, open space or active farmland.
Um, you put in there requiring one split because you can't have multiple splits, right? It's just one split.
Split by very nature one.
Yeah, but would somebody look at that and say lot size hundred ounce minimum split? Alright, well, if I split it four times at four thou, you know, one thousand. You know, per, I, I don't know. I just.
You took it for splits in the land vision act. And what we, the way this is written, like, in most of the money elsewhere, is you get one split per ten acres property.
Okay.
So you're, or you would get four splits, but. You get four, two-ish acre splits and the other thirty-two-ish acres would have to stay in farmland. Or, or, or. Uh.
And they would not be.
Hundred. Then you could be ten.
Right.
Right, but, but eighty-ish acres then stays in farmland. So the ratio always stays the same.
Okay. So it doesn't really need to be stated. It's already kind of, okay.
Well, I mean, again, the, the zoning event that would be envisioned by the master plan and then we present to you guys. As far as process, we have way more.
Okay. No, I just.
As far as like describing how it.
Yeah, I just. S- specifics are never a bad thing, right? You know, especially just, we've gotten into trouble before in this township because. You know, s- we weren't specific, right? So let's.
That one, yeah, we'll, we'll bring you one where you guys can words move.
Okay.
One, we can talk about how to split flats inside condos or the dust and all that.
Okay.
And. Just to clarify, so the first bullet, I think I get. The second bullet, the one we're talking about is now called what preservation? It's not farmland preservation, right? You just called it green space preservation?
Yeah, we, we, that's true. We should change the slide too. Based on the special last time, we agree that a lot of what you're trying to preserve in the eastern, southern parts of township is not farmland.
Okay.
It's, so it's woods or wetlands or hillsides or, you know, that, and all that sort of, so we want to change it to green space preservation.
I like that.
That's bullet two, not bullet one is correct as written. Bullet two will be.
We're in, uh, bullet one is the word preservation instead of preservation.
Perfect.
And I think, I, I, I think we, but it's, it's just semantics, except that it, it explains what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
Right?
And if I may also add too, that the farmland preservation is a different category than the rural preservation. So you, if we. Refer back to the draft future land use map, that, that chunk of the light green color, that's farmland preservation, but the surrounding green all around it is rural preservation. So these are two different districts.
I bet.
Yeah, and we can talk about if we want to extend that slide scaling to the rural preservation or not. Um, the rural preservation district as it stands now has some rural neighborhoods. Kind of like when I should just look at, you know, prime roads and share driveways and that is gonna get you dense power at one per ten acres, but it is. You know, it's also a rural character, so we can kind of talk about that. In the farmland preservation, where we do have a few farms left. There's something saying, no, can't take your farm and split it so that everyone has five acres of whole farm. We can save number of houses, but leave some of that land. That's what we're going.
Which is a great segue into the next point, um, our recommendation to prohibit P U D site condos and plats within the farmland preservation district. Again, to. Emphasis on the p- preservation and the farmland that still does exist or the last of it that does exist in the township.
Can I ask for one more on that? Or restrict prohibit? I think our current farmland preservation allows for a church, which is why we got, what is it? Eight a Bible in the middle of farmland preservation? Was the church always gonna be a P U D?
The church was there before the farmland preservation was there.
Okay. But it's currently in the, in. Our current zoning for farmland preservation does allow a church. Are we, the fact that it's not limited here, limited listed here as a prohibition, are we continuing to allow or are we gonna exclude that as well?
Well, I, is the church part of a P U D site plant? Like, I don't.
I don't believe that it is.
Would be allowed by writers.
Allowed by right and residential.
Yeah, so I mean, it just kind of depends, I think, moving forward, if the recommendation or. The, uh, temperature of the group is to eliminate allowing religious institutions within the farmland preservation zoning district. Um, and then that would just be a legal non-conforming use, or if you would like to continue that and, and allow it as a special land use approval or something of that nature.
Okay.
Uh, a standing submitted prohibition on churches or institutions, we should check that we have churning on. Uh, because there are legal protections for them in the land use standpoint. I, I don't think saying you can't do that in the zoning district, here's why I look where you can is necessarily a problem, but.
Does anybody have a strong inclination to remove churches from this?
No.
Yeah. And I look at the scale of it, but, but I have nothing against churches and I've, like you said, at least there's five others on where they could put it. But when I look at like the scale of eight a Bible and the size of that massive parking lot. Um.
I was trying to read the room. I, I, I appreciate your position.
Yeah, you know, I listened from somebody who came to this board years ago and fought getting a church moving in right in front of my neighborhood on Cascade Road. Yeah, I mean, I think we need to.
So just a, a quick show of hands who would like to, if we can prohibit churches from this area. So I got three to four, so.
Maybe two apps and so it's, could be close.
There's one app.
Well, he definitely would vote for us.
Yeah.
I am dead sure about that.
With a time and sale.
If there's anybody on this thing, I would be sure with him.
Also do something, and I'll be honest, I've never done this, but the rule game should do something that limits scope and scale of a jurisdiction, farmland preservation. Something as simple as the number of parks.
Sure.
One line, I, I agree. Not, not create a Bible parking lot. It removes the rural character.
Can I point out that they own a thirty-six acre parcel right there? And they're, and they're occupying, uh, approximately fifteen acres of it, and that includes the building. And they also own another, they also own another, they own another nineteen acres going down to Cascade Road. That's all just vacant.
Since this could be contentious and I, I don't want to speak for the board, but. And I think through the trustees that are on the board, I think it would. I, I, I don't, I think, I don't know if it would make it through board to remove churches. And I'm looking to you as, you know, validation based on what you know of the board.
Well, what he was saying first limiting, like, could we say if you have more than a thousand parking spaces, it must be a. Um, porous surface. I mean, it. I go back to, is it, you've lost the rural character. It's, it's, it's not a. I guess I'm coming across on.
I, well, we're spending a lot of, my, what I'm trying to do is limit the time that we spend on it. Doesn't, if it's not gonna pass, right?
Hey.
And, and I'm just trying to be pragmatic about it. And I don't know, based on what I know of his board, that it would, but you tell me if, if, if I'm not thinking about that correctly.
I, I can't speak to the rest of the board, but.
Yeah.
Well.
Look, can I, I do want to know churches are only allowed as a special use, so they're not by right. So you would have some more approval requirements.
We can absolutely deal with that here.
On a case by case basis.
Yes.
Well, and I just, I didn't realize they own the, I did, I did realize, I guess I just didn't count it first, but they have ninety-two acres, so. With respect to preserving land, they have ninety-two acres of, of open space out there. They're occupying fifteen. So I, in a sense, they're doing exactly what we want somebody to do, right? Develop a small portion of the overall area that you have. For now, since, if for now, and who's to say the next church is gonna be is equally. What do you mean for now? They can't enlarge that site. The township told them that they are built out. They can't split and sell any of that land that you said is. Perhaps they could sell it, yes, but I'm saying as far as their facility, that's why they built satellite facilities because the township told them. This is all.
And, and not to get personal, but what's the reluctance? I mean, what's the thought process that you guys are having, um, that it's okay to leave it in? I mean, I just may, because maybe I'm missing something.
I, this is, for me, I just don't like regulating religious institutions and things, so. Uh.
Yeah.
It, it, it can. It's, yeah, it, it can slow off.
Not necessary.
Yeah, but that's just my personal opinion more.
Okay.
Than, than anything else.
Okay.
But with that said, I think, you know, falls in place, is they have to get our permission. And this body can say, hey, we want to preserve what it looks like out there, non-porous surface, right? There's things like that, that, that. I believe that our checks and balances there, so.
Okay.
And as much as anything, I'm just trying to push this along. Is, if it's something that I don't think will get through. You know? That, that's my concern more than anything, but I don't know if the other guys want to speak in their reasoning. I tend.
Well, it's possible your attorney might have a, a strong recommendation one way or the other.
I just don't, if we're, if we don't have, uh, a forum to do it, I don't want to spend money on the attorney.
Yeah, I get that, but my, my question to you is, I've forgot your name. I'm sorry. It was Danielle and Chris. With, with Chris's wording, where Chris is, Chris said, you know, we could put some constraints, so. Would you, would you still think that would be a hard sell? Any limitations at all or just?
I don't know that we have a majority of this board that is interested in it. And that, that's my concern. Um, I can do a show of hand again, who is interested in putting some constraints as it relates to this, knowing that we have. The ability to do those constraints, you know, case by case, but I guess let's see a show of hands if you want to put constraints on a, a church body here. We're still, you know, fully ordering, so. Yeah, I'm not trying to make it, I'm just trying to move it forward, so.
I can see a problem.
She's coming back, so let's table this. If it pops here and you have a different opinion, then we can address it then. Is that, is that fair, guys?
Yeah, that's fair. Very fair. Thank you.
Uh, great, thank you. Um, allow rezonings to R one only within the utility service boundary. Um, another recommendation, although that might be something you currently have within your standards. Is that correct, Brian?
What's that?
Allowing a rezoning to R one only within the utility service boundary. Or is that in, for some reason I was thinking you guys already had that, but maybe I'm.
I don't know if it's specifically written, but it's somewhat applied that if you're gonna rezone to something denser than that, you'd need, right? Utilities present or something.
Okay. Kind of thing where we want to make sure that the plan is explicit and clearer than current.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's actually policy change.
Okay. Um.
Not moved though? I look at this utility service boundary and all the green is to the right of it or to the east of it.
Yeah, on the mountain, master plan. And what, what you may get is a developer that comes in, East Buckford, says. R one, guys, hundred fifty houses. He's, he, no, it says right here in the master plan. No. I mean, you, you could, there's another time we can do that now.
Yeah.
Just this would give you that cargo.
Hmm.
We're, so discuss this. It's not.
Got it.
Um, as also we discussed last month, um, continuing efforts to acquire land for preservation and recreation as we'll get into. Further, especially when we have conversations with, uh, the township parks director. Um, and then lastly incorporating other ideas and directions from the farmland preservation committee. So we'll continue work with that, uh. Uh, body to ensure that everything is, um, works with one another.
Chairman? It is disorienting. I keep trying to scroll. I'm like, it's not working.
Nothing happens.
Yes.
Hey, I, I don't want to go backwards too far, but with regard to the utility, uh, bout, service boundary. Uh, and I don't know if Brian or someone else is aware of this, but. I know a while back, there were, at one time, there was discussion that that line was on Butrick because. The system could not handle additional capacity to the east. Do you know if that is? If there's been any talk, I was told that if they expanded too much along that Butrick corridor, they're gonna have to put a water tower in.
I don't know for sure. That could be one of the reasons, but I haven't.
Okay.
Those conversations.
I just know there's been a wad, a lot of homes added recently. Upstream of the line that gives them all of their pressures. So I didn't know if, if that, uh, if that weighed on it or not.
Scaled it back, right? We've brought the utility service boundary back slightly if, if anything.
Snow.
It used to be, it used to be.
Of cherry valley. Okay. Okay, alright, alright.
We have those in back, but that's a good point. Uh, but maybe we should confirm that because. This way we can justify on the text.
I was probably on the other side of Butrick to include the school district's property.
Stations that would take to service the west side of Butrick. Substantial portion.
That's something maybe the township engineer is, is more aware of.
When I add the township engineer.
Yeah.
Reach out.
Hmm.
Said, ask him about that service boundary. Make sure he's on board with it.
Uh. Next concept, airport greenway. Um, again, something that we've already discussed, um, but here's kind of a, a new, uh, iteration of that discussion. Um, the dark green signifies, um, it's a new designation that is now entitled, uh, golf course or open space. And then the light green is that, or I should say the lighter green that's just south of that darker green color is, um, rural preservation. Um, so the airport safety zones have been included in the future land use map, um, to, uh, signify, uh, different, uh, regulations where you can build, where you can't build, where the safety zones are located and so forth. Um, we are working with township staff to confirm that what those, um. Like the exact dimensions of those safety zones, so that may change a little bit in the next draft that you see, but just note that that's something that we're kind of working on and, and getting information on still. Um, also taking into account watershed, groundwater protection, um, and also preservation of the, um. Existing, uh, rural nature of that area, um, preserving the existing character of that area and promoting for recreation, whether if that be open space or. Walking trails or parkland or passive recreation or something of that nature. Um, and then also, um, taking into account, um, any airport land use conflict, so keeping that industrial businesses, um, to the west and keeping it rural to the east. Did you have anything you want to add to that?
No, I think you covered.
Okay.
Um, well, I, it is, I didn't want to say anything. That's the watershed groundwater thing. Um, obviously, we know we've got watershed groundwater issues in that area. The process is not gonna be worse. Um. There's, there's some talk, I, I actually heard some talk like, well, I shouldn't industrial, fewer birds, but. If you're gonna have industrial in that area, you need to have, uh, a swamp, protect, use against the, you know, groups in the park lots. That's gonna be ponds. That's actually gonna be more birds. So just wanted to address. Uh, by keeping it all green space, you're gonna have infiltration, uh, of rainwater and.
Thank you. Very well said.
We might bring it back.
Yeah, say that, yeah.
Okay, we go with that exact issue and how, especially. Including, we saw the industrial.
I have one.
Interesting.
One question, and I think it's a M dot property. I think it's part of what I emailed you. So if you look at, um, Cascade Rec Park or, I don't know the better name for it. In the existing, to the southeast is a small trapezoidal piece of property that is. What's that?
That's the old rest area.
Yep. Okay, long before my time, but I'll take your word for it. Okay.
Sure.
Now it's shaded, um, residential.
Hmm.
Is that purposeful or, um?
Um, that was something that wasn't flagged when I received the, admittedly, when I received the parks and rec information from, um, the Grand Valley Metro Council, which. I'm to understand that that data is not totally current. Um, if the appetite is to change that to public semi-public, we can absolutely do that. Um, there wasn't necessarily a, a. Intention behind that being residential.
I'd love to get that property.
Future vision is for that? It's not, it's not a rest.
No. The M dot property is just. Sitting there. Should we put a circle around it and?
Yeah.
Target it as a.
It's, I mean, I, I've jogged by it and it's off that trail and you can kind of see.
Yeah.
Foundation.
But you're talking about the one mile loop?
Yeah.
Yeah, so have I, but I, I, I didn't know it was a rest area.
Right, yeah, you can, if you look hard enough, you can see the remnants of there.
Oh, cool.
It's right next to rec park.
Yeah.
Oh, and that's.
And remember the history of that.
Good to note.
Some green, you know.
Yeah.
Came out of this about six, right?
That's happened.
Ripped out because of that sex, right?
I believe so, or, or earlier because of some of the problems we had with it.
Yeah.
What were the problems we had? Just.
Kids partying.
Party.
Yeah, it wasn't just kids.
It was the old red roof.
It was the original red.
Um, if you could, please advance aside. Um, so back to the revised urban service boundary, um, as previously noted, uh, to the primary purpose is to prevent further expansion of suburban residential or residential. Uh, or higher density residential development past the urban services boundary. Of suburban residential or residential uh, or higher density residential development past the urban services boundary. Um, so that has been trimmed back from the previous master plan or current master plan, I should say. To uh, east of Buttrick and south of ninety six, and then again enforcing that airport. Greenway idea um, to not allow extensions of urban services into that area. Do you have a question?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, thank.
Nope, no problem. Um, so here's a side by side of the current and proposed urban services boundary map, um, as discussed. Uh, or as I previously mentioned, that line going through the airport property is just to encompass what uh. Services already exist, um, and then there would be no services that are hookups that would be permitted outside of that boundary. And also taking into constra- or taking into consideration the uh. Uh, geographic constraints and water, uh, bodies of water and the highway and M six and and all of those types of things too that that. Um, contribute to the the trim back that we have discussed.
In the. Upper right hand corner. Um, it looks like, so we we trimmed it to the. South side of Grand River, I get that, um, and then as you continue to the the very northeast corner. It looks like we've added in a little plat there, um, was it called, was it a sterling? So if you compare the is was.
Um, are you?
So we added that little, that little piece right there.
By the park, right, or right next to the park? Oh, I see.
And the other one was yellow, it's moved just. Past that. One area notice that we've expanded as opposed to contracted the boundaries, is that because it's already there and it was incorrect, or why did we?
Um, that was, I believe, um, that was in the last draft, I think. Um, but again, happy to. Adjust that um, to be more consistent, could have been an oversight.
Shouldn't we keep Dogwood Meadows in there because it it already has utility?
Is that the the north piece there? I just noticed that that got missed again.
Okay.
Right next to the park, is that what you mean?
Yes, yes.
Right here.
Yeah, right, exactly, thank you, Chair Chairman.
So they already have it?
They already have water there.
So that that trim was not.
I don't know about sewer, but I know they have water.
Check the boundary with our engineer.
Yeah.
Yep.
They do have water there, looks like.
Yeah. I was really thirsty there once, I got a drink, so I know they have water.
Um, yeah, I apologize for these um, oversights here, I.
Previous, I'm sorry, on the existing, so that little tiny. Down, 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 right? Yes, that's a corner, that's the southwest, yeah, that little piece right there, no. Trace that line up. Perfect, down, down, Grand River. Down Grand River, down, right, too far, just before the pond or whatever. So that little trapezoid, does that, they currently have it, is that why that was added, or like, is that just an oversight?
I don't think.
Well, I think um, the urban services boundary was adjusted because those parcels were designated. Our plan for um, the suburban residential, the yellow. Um, future land use design designation, however, that could be trimmed back and that could be designated as rural. Uh, president, preservation.
You know, that's, does that somebody even have water and sewer, right, you know?
It doesn't, no.
Not, okay, so I guess.
Yeah, I think we need to put it back.
Pull it off that, because it doesn't have it.
Put it back on Dogwood Meadows. And then talk to the engineer.
Yeah.
Add this.
Dogwood Meadows has sanitary and water already.
Okay.
Thank you.
Get their sanitary through Ada.
As discussed, um, again during last meeting, um, we had discussed the idea of what. The future of the township golf courses may look like in the next ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years. Um, and it was uh, discussed at that point that um, designating those areas as uh, future parkland. Or open space, or perhaps they'll remain a golf course for the foreseeable future and and likely will for many or at least several years to come. Um, so the the designation for golf courses has been uh, adjusted to include pa- uh, to be titled park or open space. Sorry, golf course or open space, um, so the first priority, um, of course, would be to remain active golf courses. Um, second priority would be a uh, public park, whether if it be township or county owned and maintained. Um, and then the third priority would be low density with high quality residential, um, with preserved green space. Um, and then those blue arrows there kind of indicate those areas where that would apply. Uh, Cascade Village. Um, so. Uh, as per our meeting, um, last month, we had also talked about um, the village boundary. So here's a um, the the light purple here is the proposed village boundary, and we had also talked about. Why it extends so far uh, the as far west as it as it does, and then as far east as it does. Um, I did include the township owned property um, to the south fair towards the um, towards the river, and then the one cemetery that's actually on the river. So just note too that that's, that was one or a couple changes I made from uh, Mr. Bruno's email. Um, so just.
You've got the right parcels, but I think the one you just identified as a cemetery is just an open space.
Yeah.
Just the wrong color. It's actually not a cemetery.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Oh, didn't sure, did the note say cemetery, did I?
Cemetery.
I think it's a open space.
That's where the cemetery is.
The pet cemetery?
No, I say similar situation, should be part green. It's just, just, it's okay.
Okay.
You have the right parcel, just misunderstood.
And that little narrow one immediately next to it to the west is actually township owned as well.
Is that plans for recreation space?
Plan for the same one as that slightly larger one, I don't think there's any, I don't think there's definite plan for either of them right now, but they're both township.
You're gonna have this sliver right here, not be purple. It's strange.
Sorry, can you please repeat that?
That sliver right behind the the, let's see, one, two, three, four, five uh, purples uh, right, right across from Tassel Park, there's a sliver right behind them. Isn't that weird that that's not?
That's common area for the neighborhood above. That's why it's not, it's part of their P U D. It's, if you. And if you drove through there, you'd realize there's, there's like a sixty feet. Cliff there, I mean, it's, it's uh, quite an elevation change right there, it's, it's a. That'd make a great ski slope, but that'd be about it.
We can use a ski slope in Cascade.
It's, it's almost straight down.
Snow, I know, I remember the the farm there, yeah.
So you, so Chris, are you saying that that could be shaded like semi, whatever?
We could, we could do it public semi publicly, I think it's a little bit of a radical when we go down, because. But it isn't done when the plans were, hey, this preserveable spaces P U D, that means there's. Paperwork and homeowners and such, we should be able to propose this for our, it's not same thing as public ownership, but it it's getting in that direction. And it would give you.
Do we advocate ourselves to do that with every other P U D that's got open space committed though?
I mean, yeah.
Um, and then something else to note too, uh, just to reiterate from our previous discussions that the idea um, for the uh, village boundary. Um, to extend so far west is to offer for that transition of land uses between Twenty Eighth Street Corridor and your lower village or Cascade Village. Um, center, so just to note that as well. Um, if you could please, oh.
Uh, just one last one, and and this, it's naivete, so hopefully someone can answer this, so the um. Uh, what is it, um, the muffler shop. Is a, is dark green, is, are we just noting, because right now it's not a. I'm just wondering, why is that a different color than the property right next to it?
So I included that as the dark green because I didn't. I didn't, I wasn't. I don't know if it's like set in stone that that's going to be. Part of Tassel Park, I mean, I know that that was the discussion and that's likely going to happen, but that's why I included that as open space, because I wasn't certain on.
Well, I think this is a future map, right? And the township owns both of those parcels, so they both could be, I would think, painted green, does anybody disagree with that?
That's fine, I I just didn't want to like.
I I I would agree with you, because I, I don't understand. If the township owns it, becomes open space, and open space next to Tassel Park, what would be the difference?
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that that was like.
I think it should be painted all the same color.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so some key village projects that have been um, discussed, um, whether if it be with this group or the D D A. Or um, township staff, um, one of which is the um, what we've been kind of referring to as the upper village area or this. Campus, library campus, Friendship Park, so that's um, going to be an important piece of the future land use plan and connecting those two areas to. To one another between the upper village and the lower village, um, and how all of those spaces kind of intermingle with one another, and of course. Um, acknowledging the um. Gathering space, the community gathering space that will be here sooner rather than later. Um, if you could please advance the slide. Um, another key project that was uh, taken into consideration through the uh, Cascade Village designation. Um, is the bike paths, bike path across the bridge, so again, adding that piece of connectivity and and how that. Um, plays into the future land use plan um, from a recreation standpoint. Um, Tassel Park expansion, which we had just discussed, so that will be incorporated into the next draft. Um, Thorn Apple Center upgrades and redevelopment, so that's going to be a huge piece of the uh, Cascade Village. Um, uh. Docket, I suppose, for for the D D A within the next uh, upcoming years, whether it be phased out, or you know, they're kind of still figuring out what that might look like for them. Um, but of course, kind of taking into uh, consideration key redevelopment opportunities um, within prime areas. So Thorn Apple Center being one of those that what would uh, the future land use of that look like, whether it be mixed uses or um. Uh, pedestrian upgrades and uh. Public spaces and and so forth.
The the D D A is already in discussions with the owners of that property about landscaping and pedestrian upgrades, which would be kind of phase one. Moving towards three allowed buildings that land uses, bringing in tenants. Lots of focused uh, efforts there. A lot of that went into the UIs for P U D amendments at some point. For developers, but that's, there's, there's nothing imminent, but the the D D A and developers are. On the same page about wanting something different for what that, that site is currently kind of, kind of scuffling, long, doing okay, but. Could be finished shots.
So would that be the kind of the baseline, you'd mentioned that um, D N W um. As you headed closer and closer to. Um, was you were just talking about the old Twenty Eighth Street. Um, that we get tighter and tighter on our like architectural.
Correct.
What's what I'm looking for? Standards, like your architectural standards, so we would base our architectural standard on their vision?
So we actually. If. Oh, no, no.
Especially because the D D A is going to. Just looking at, that's unofficial, yeah, the D A is looking at putting the money. And saying, we're paying for it, we just, now, we'll see exactly what it's looking like, but no, it would be. That, that would be a pilot project for the township, not the.
Perfect.
Yeah, and um, we also. Want to put a pin in that because we have like five slides. Relating to that very comment in this presentation, so we'll get to it.
Thank you.
Um. And I should not also note too that, you know, this, we're in preliminary discussions and and the folks from Thorn Apple Center just kind of. We uh, myself and and Brian and Grace just met them over the summer, so. It's been, it's it's been a good process, but we're kind of just trying to figure out next steps and. What all of that looks like in light of the new management and and so forth, so stay tuned on how that evolves over time. Uh. Another aspect that we have discussed um, with uh, township staff and uh, with uh, during Developer Day and and other. Um, events or occasions is uh, old Twenty Eighth Street uh, streetscape and and redevelopment of old Twenty Eighth Street. Um, so the idea there is that old Twenty Eighth Street has a lot of really great bones to create a walkable, bikeable. Uh, connected environment to the lower village area or Thorn Apple Center area, um, to kind of connect both of those pieces together. Albeit Cascade Road has a little bit of a. Uh, constraint with the high traffic volumes and um, high uh, speed limits. But that's uh, the township engineer has done a lot of really great work relating to that, and that will be incorporated into the plan that the D D A is working on. And the overall vision that will then be brought to several boards and commissions. Um, I should also note too that um, through the strategic plan process, when we did that huge push of public engagement back in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Um, the uh, establishment of a village area was continuously the highest priority that we heard from. Across the board, so this is the township's um. Way of validating that what they heard from the community and taxpayers and kind of working towards that goal.
One, there's one big implementation aspect to that, it's helpful, which is the road commission. In a meeting anyway, told us. Township and D D A and Park Launch to do a move on. Uh, they they consider Cascade Road and Twenty Eighth Street as key parts of their network and blue traffic is going to be the priority. And that's their constituents. Whereas like Henry Street don't have nearly the true traffic problems, it can be more of a business pedestrian. Parking and going to the business bicycle, at least it's not prioritized over the speed of food traffic on that corridor. And so that gives us a lot more design options. Um, and in in addition to that, it connects the library to the businesses. Um, and can really become an accessible.
I think you guys should just look at Gaslight Village, look at Downtown Ada, except for the third story stuff. And make it exactly like that, just restaurants and shops, restaurants and shops, I mean, that that that. Is the perfect spot for it, and I mean, you see people walking downtown Ada, you see people walking in Gaslight, it's, that's, you know, I. I can't tell you how much it aggravates me that Ada's kicking our ass, it's just their Ada, I mean, come on. You should be, we should be leading the pack, so that's the place to do it.
Is the idea to block off. Old Twenty Eighth Street from Twenty Eighth Street, so it's a more entry from one end off of Cascade Road?
Um, there. The road commission told us, there's staying things on the table. I wouldn't say complete block off, but one way street is a potential option.
That's a good idea.
To go, and I don't know which way you want to go, you just got to go up or down the hill with one way, but one way street's an option. That would slow traffic and and open up land for parking. Um. wider sidewalks are an option, things like that, so. Uh, you help, we were told by the road commission, they wouldn't care if we closed it, made it the best street, which we shouldn't, that's not. But because you have to have some cars, right, but you don't completely want cars moving slowly and moving cars.
I mean, I walk it every day, every day, my office is. It it's, I I don't see a problem with congestion with traffic, I mean, I, but that's just my opinion. Yeah, the guy who walks it every day.
No, I I I think that, that's what we're seeing, that's our 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 vision of it too, it's. There's a lot we can do with it, because it's not, and that's not necessarily the.
Yeah, I would keep it two way, keep it twenty five, the only thing I would change is uh, going towards Cascade Road, you gotta be able to go both ways, turn left or right there.
That didn't work so well when they used to do that.
Uh, you know what, I never had a problem with it, but.
A lot of people did.
A lot of people shouldn't have driver's license.
That's a road.
There's been a lot of discussion about that, um. I know that the township engineer has been working with the road commission to develop some ideas of what. Traffic calming um, devices would be available, um, some of them might be like kind of the. Low hanging fruit, so to speak, of street trees and kind of creating more of an enclosed environment, um, do you recall it like what that? Uh, what the ideas they were kicking around?
Well, it was a few months ago. Much of ideas they shut down. Um, I mean, the road commission, as much as they've been very. They're wild, not wanting to use, they're very restrictive, following to Cascade. Which has things. Um, there is a, I mean, Mark Crosswalk, uh, just north. Um, yeah, it's, take it away, hands, we we have talked to them about trying to signalize that, where do the hogs, where do a hawk signal? They were skeptical, um. We talked about installing a roundabout on Twenty Eighth, it's not worked, that's a hard one.
I hate roundabouts.
That that was, that's a hard no, the road commission also went up from supervisor and.
Uh, it's just me personally.
But uh, so, but anyway, these ideas were thrown out, and and so there are some other things we can do. But it may be that that, hey, no, yes, we got to go over the top, and yes, photography to help with that. But I don't know. Um, the uh but it's it it is an impediment to establishing that village and there are things that haven't been shot down yet. Um, but in the meantime, no light at uh regular twenty-eighth, no light at Thorn Apple River, those are safe crossings. We gotta, I think, upgrading those and making those as safe as possible.
What's the speed limit coming into the village? Is it still at fifty-five up to that light at uh, what is it, Thorn Apple River Drive? This is, yeah, so Joe, I think maybe if we bump the speed limit down, that would might help, but I I don't know if I want to do a skybridge walking over. I think that would look kind of.
Uh, well, from what the road commission has said too, that looking at speed limits is also not.
Really?
Either.
So the one that is a study with Steve and the traffic, however fast it's going, advice is posted speed and speed limit being percent of that number.
Well, shoot, it's seventy-five miles an hour every day.
So it needs to be one of the most likely.
Yeah.
But but with the addition of the bike path on the bridge, it's possible we have a window where the speed will actually really go down because people will be like, whoa, this is different.
Yeah.
It's narrower, there's Jersey barrier, people are on bikes and they slow down. If we get a speed study done in the initial period, people are nervous. We would be able to, either way.
We talked about that.
That is going to slow down a little bit as the public. And coming the other way is an issue too. You got a lit, you got a little bit of a lead time because the light up burden, but it's speed on S A road. I don't mean just repeat the same problems everybody knows the path.
Yeah.
They are repetitive.
I we talked about that in the pathway committee when we just, when we just uh approved the changes to that bridge. They're going to narrow those lanes significantly. I don't know if you realize that, but all of the additional width for the path is coming out of those out of those lanes. So.
For the bridge.
That's going, yes.
So that's building a separate.
No, so that's going to significantly slow people down crossing that bridge because they're going to come to that bridge, they're used to that twelve foot wide lane and it's gonna it's going to be conventional width going through there.
It's still in four lanes.
Right. Well, it'll be, it's five, actually.
Well, yeah.
It'll still be five lanes, but they'll be, uh, I think the travel lanes, I don't quote me on this, but I want to say they're going to be twenty-four inches narrower.
So you still have the stack space from the light to five.
Yeah. Hmm, the configuration of the lanes is just narrower.
I I I kind of have one, I'm sure it kind of falls in the cracks. Well, so all the perspective so far has been on the cars and how they're how they're operating. I'm interested in Chris's perspective. What I find really odd is is we have a pedestrian pathway that makes it to what, Peace? The gravel street swings right up to the cemetery, goes by a transformer and doesn't meet at the intersection of Thornapple River Drive and Cascade Road. So now you're crossing where there isn't a light, there is a crosswalk.
Oh.
But if you do try to cross at Thornapple River Drive and Cascade Road, we now have a no turn on red. So the cars sit there and wait and wait and wait and wait. And they now want to turn when you get the cross signal for a pedestrian.
Yes.
Wouldn't it be more pedestrian safe to let all the cars turn while it's red? So that there's no built up.
Can I, can I back up one second? You said you go up Peace Street, you turn left at the substation?
Yep, that's what the bike path is currently.
Yeah.
Right, but there's sidewalk that takes you all the way to Cascade Road.
There is, but you can't get so.
I don't believe there is.
I'm looking right at it.
There, there, there is.
Recently.
It's, it's.
There is, but.
Satellite image. So let me restate it. There is a pathway, but I said it, it doesn't take you to a light. It takes you to a crosswalk where you, you know, you'll hail Mary and cross. Why are we looking at?
Gotcha. I see what you're saying.
Getting a crosswalk at the light and relieving the pressure of traffic, let them turn right on red. So when it's our turn to cross, we can effect cross. I've lived here almost twenty years and my belief is that we put that no turn on red because someone was injured on that corner. And it's a back-assward philosophy.
We didn't, the county did.
Okay.
The township tried to get them to walk that back, they.
But there was an injury, so we stack up pressure, so there's more injuries. It doesn't make sense. It's back-asswards philosophy. Someone turning right hit somebody on red, so we're now going to have everyone sit there.
We can solve this as a.
Yeah, really? So we can't, even if we put more?
Issue, it is possible to be solved.
Okay. I've seen so many kids almost get clipped.
Those talks at the, at the border, I don't know, I was at a board meeting a few years ago and I was brought up.
Yeah.
Literally every day, and this is not an exaggeration, almost every day I'm sitting there waiting for green, waiting for greens, can't turn right on red. And the car in front of me almost clipped someone. It's.
They're so impatient.
They're so impatient, they're waiting, 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 and it's like, holy cow, there's a bike, then just wait for it to happen.
Then they should go up early and don't rush.
And that way, you can do right through both the light and you can do like the pedestrian signal goes first, so people get in the crosswalk, but then that like red.
Sure.
But but while left runners are going and you're not, maybe we'll go like the right on red. So these are options, they can be taken to the road commission, they can be put in the master plan. You know, to approve pedestrians with those corners and then we pass them down. Sorry, we should keep.
Yeah, and I should also reiterate too that township engineer has been working with the road commission on how discussing these issues. So, you know, hopefully there will be some movement on that. Uh, moving forward, architectural standards update, we have uh begun preliminary discussions with the DDA on uh architectural standards within the um DDA boundary and most notably the uh Cascade Village area. Um, so again, extending beyond the village to the Twenty-Eighth Street corridor to offer for that transition between land uses and architect uh architectural standards. Um, and then the architectural review committee has met once to uh thus far, but hoping hoping to get more regular meetings scheduled um on the books to kind of narrow down what those standards might uh end up looking like from um more of a narrowed down standpoint. Um, so the uh overall concept here is to provide a a a better and best type of um relationship between new development or redevelopment within Cascade Village and the Twenty-Eighth Street corridor. So the better concept being this is your base that's required by zoning and uh what, you know, that whatever those zoning recommendations or requirements might end up being uh for architectural standards, whether if it be I don't, you you know, setbacks and building heights and building materials and signage and window display and so forth. Um, and then the the best scenario being what the DDA would kick in money to help fund. So whether if that be facade improvements or sign improvements or um site, whole site improvements and and so forth. Um, so again, we're, 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 oh.
I, does anybody have any questions? I mean, this is a DDA thing.
Hmm, yeah, but it.
Not, it's only partial because half of this is.
Right, so it would translate to zoning recommendations through this master plan for kind of what that better scenario would be.
So my, the only question I have is, would it be smart to have somebody from this committee on, in those discussions with the DDA? Okay, there is, okay.
Yeah, Scott, I think you're on the, or the architectural, right?
Yes.
Okay, just so that we get the benefit of their conversations, you know?
The the purpose of that N O C is that it's a joint planning commission DDA.
Yeah.
But we need, it does need to start being more often.
Yeah, so we've been working with that with township staff to get those meetings more regularly scheduled. Um. So DDA's preliminary architectural preferences, um, we want to emphasize the uh cottagee type feel. Um, the traditional type of development, uh colonial type feel. Um, so there's a couple images on the next following slides that the DDA um expressed that they liked. Um, and I believe that one picture, a couple slides up is actually Gaslight Village, so just FYI on that one. I recall we talked about that in the ARC meeting.
Wanted to make sure that you guys don't say, whoa, what do they want? That's terrible, we hate that. So as long as, as long as you guys are on the same page with them architecture, we can start running with this broad theme of cottagee peak roofs, wooden, sort of a science. You know, ornamentation.
No more than two stories.
So sorry, two and a half.
Yeah, in the village.
One and a half. So, so I hate to venture this because we've got an architect on the board here, but they all look cottagee to me, except for the one right there that looked awfully farmland and farm to me, not.
I kind of like that though.
That's colonial.
Cottage farm. Looks like Ada. Well, how it used to.
Yeah, that's deja vu right there.
Yeah.
Well, I think um this image was pulled utilizing the local precedent of the ice cream shops because they are like older uh cottagee type home type of businesses. So that's kind of where this image came from. We sort of pulled from that idea.
Okay, nice.
Um, moving into other mixed use designations, um again, the mixed use or redevelopment areas that we have been uh narrowing in and focusing quite a bit on Twenty-Eighth Street corridor, Starkland Wood areas, waterfall shops, Meyer area, Centennial Park, Four Corners and Southwest. So these remaining slides will be just to confirm and validate that we heard what the direction that we received and we'll talk about next steps. Um, Twenty-Eighth Street mixed use, uh two and a half story buildings, no available height bonuses. Um, no residential, only retail, restaurant, medical and office type lane uses are, would be permitted. Um, there would be uh more robust architectural standards that are um put into place with site design standards. Um, with regard to uh building and site design, signage, lighting, all of those types of things. Um, no residential, as I previously mentioned, and no hotels, no new hotels.
There was discussion about reaching out to legal counsel regarding that. Did anybody follow up on that?
The hotels?
Yeah.
Okay, we asked about the, there was the apartments versus condos was question two and we haven't heard back.
Okay, I thought somebody brought the hotel thing up too, I thought.
I don't think we were, no, because you can zone those a certain area.
Yes, but.
All right, good.
No, no, wait a minute. You, we say no residential, but remember we've, we approved uh it's behind uh Walmart there, we approved a new uh condo development.
That was prior to this.
Okay.
I think that is in the yellow.
See right here.
Okay, oh, it's right there. Okay, okay. Okay.
It's off Brunel Street here.
Okay, yeah.
I think that's community residential.
Bruno, yeah.
Um, any.
I thought that was Richardson Street.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Any further questions on this?
Farmland Preservation Subcommittee Individuals uh or Brian. So the talk of some grants for rewriting a uh zoning ordinance um tied to um X percent of the poverty line. We were talking about having someone come and speak to this board about that. Because the concept is if we're getting COVID funds, if we're wanting to get grants for different things, if we're wanting federal dollars for anything, we do have to have a spot somewhere in the township for um young people and old. Should we have that conversation before we have um no residential on Twenty-Eighth Street?
Oh, we have a spot for the old there. Yeah, right there up on, is it?
Alive.
Well, to answer that question in part, um, these mixed use designations do primarily or majority would allow for residential development with excluding Twenty-Eighth Street. If that helps answer your question a little bit.
So I don't think the committee has, I mean, we, we listened to what uh Mr. Spencer had to say. And, but we have not as a committee discussed it really yet um for next steps, but uh that is something that uh was thrown out there that I think several of us wanted to understand better. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we're happy to take direction on, you know, as further conversations happen.
Yeah.
Uh.
So how do we make that next step? Do we ask the chair if he's willing to entertain having someone come and speak to us about?
I have no issue with it. And and it's worked with Maddie.
Okay.
Which I think Maddie has his card. Oh, see, there we go. I think we're just a little bit ahead of where.
Oh, we are.
Yeah.
But I, it was a perfect opportunity to have that discussion.
Right, I I suppose. Yeah.
Um.
Like you guys are inclined.
I don't know, we just, like I said, we hadn't talked about it yet, so I.
Well, I think we are. I think, I think we see it as a fruitful potential discussion. Let's get him in here.
Start triangle.
Yep, uh star triangle, of course, that area there that shaded in that light orange. Um, building height, again, two and a half stories, um but perhaps allowing the um uh more stories than that, um provided that there are some sort of payments or bonuses that are awarded. Um, so. Pardon?
A ladder truck bonus.
Yeah.
The L T B.
Ladder truck bonus.
Old T G, I like.
Uh, so a silver bonus would be the three stories and whatever those parameters look like um to achieve that that silver uh status and then gold for depending on if you provide to pay for the ladder truck, I suppose. So again, these are ideas that will flesh out further and and this will be a good segue into what the next steps are going to be in our our next conversation. What's that?
It's all good.
Yeah.
Now you should do whatever you want.
Um.
Level of enrichment, anything.
Moving right on.
Uh, so for the star triangle, we're looking at a residential density of approximately six units per acre by right. And then again, those bonuses could then be awarded um from different uh levels, depending on what those parameters look like between the silver and the gold, up to eight units per acre would be that that gold standard. Um, kind of however that shakes out of what those um density bonuses are, what those.
The L T B.
And that's where we talked about condos versus apartments.
Correct.
Beer, yeah.
Yeah, in fact, we'd like to, for our next discussion, focus on that. You know, what are the bonus, what are the bonus items, what do they get you? Uh, that's.
Um, if you could please advance the slide. Uh, one more, please.
Happy that this is all written here, but I'd like to see some kind of bonus, but.
That'd be the ladder truck bonus, right?
Um, so Glenwood Hills is very similar to the star triangle. Um, the existing lane uses include uh Office Park, unfinished Office Park. Um, decay or less uh utilized office. Yeah, I.
On the sea.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I walked back from that word before I finished it. Um, future lane uses include offices, medical um or residential. Um, and if you could please advance the slide. Um, again, this is, these are the same parameters as the star triangle, building height at uh two and a half stories by right. Um, and then bonuses offered up to four stories, depending on what that density bonus uh program looks like. Um, which will flesh out further through this process. Um, residential density, six units per acre by right, and then up to eight again for that.
Our next session, we're going to dive deep into this, right?
Yep.
Uh, maybe.
Um, waterfall shops, mixed use, again, two and a half stories, um no available height bonuses um for this area and that's designated in um that uh blue. Um, and the image on the right, um appropriate land uses include retail, restaurant, medical and office space. Um, no residential would be permitted and we put hotels question mark because I no hotels in this area either.
Yeah, so, but we did talk about it on Hotel Avenue, didn't we?
That's.
And say it.
And there are two.
So if you go back a screen, ironically, the the, what do you call, the tan shaded are where the hotels, the Hotel Avenue are located, right?
There, yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, two right there. So that's interesting point, maybe we should.
We could expand the waterfall shop.
You made that intention. Oh, actually, we can go in that one, go to Hotel Avenue by the weather. Maybe we may just want that.
I almost think that the shading is like. I think the hotels is being part of Waterfall, not Glenwood, so I don't know if that tan is too big or.
Yeah, maybe.
Well, I think the problem is water, isn't it? Right, yeah, I mean, isn't, aren't these the two?
The weather.
Both the two hotels, I believe.
That's right, yeah, yeah. So yeah, maybe we switch that.
I have like seven hotels here.
I'm not saying.
I thought the ones on Hotel Avenue we talked about, they would, that that area was still acceptable.
That's a good question, Mark.
But it is hotel.
Did we have one hotel shut down the last two weeks?
Pardon?
We didn't have a hotel shut down in the last two weeks.
Um.
What are they?
Ceased operations.
Cease operations. Okay, just asking. That's good.
Now they're more of a weekly establishment.
So I'll throw it back at you, Chris, so I, I don't really want to get into the more or less hotels. Just the reality, we have two currently. So I would personally, unless some objects like to see the the blue move to capture those, because I think that's all part of Waterfall.
Yeah, I think that is all part of the same P U D.
It is, yeah.
Big weapons back there.
I'm just saying, do we want a hotel right here?
No, no, I I don't think we do. I I think we want them along Hotel Avenue on the, on the other side.
There are two, we're not making nine performing and, you know.
Well, they're not really, I don't think they're part of the P U D, are they?
Oh, we're just saying, we would take these two.
That is all one large P U D there. They are part of the same.
They are.
Yeah.
Interesting. Hmm.
So they're part of which P U D?
Waterfall.
That whole area and then the two hotels.
That whole area and then the two hotels as well.
Okay.
Um, so I'm not totally clear on what the direction is. Do we want to include it in waterfall shops? Or do we not?
Do we need to vote on this?
Since it's one PUD, it has to be, wouldn't we, we would shade a PUD two different colors?
We want to make sure, do you want those houses or not?
No, we have eight. That's more than enough.
I think the way you have it drawn here is fine with me, but.
Wait, but Rob's not here.
Okay, I'm good with that. I just, I thought it odd, but now that it's purposeful, purposely odd, we are gonna. Label them nonconforming and, alright, I'm good with it.
It's been discussed.
It's been discussed, good.
Meyer area mixed use, um. Up to four story, no available height bonuses, um four story max, um appropriately in uses would include. Uh, retail, restaurant, medical, office or hotel. This is the only area of which hotel would be permitted. And no residential would be permitted, so that's going to be that peach color that you see um shaded on the image on the bottom.
At the risk of somebody throwing something at me, because I don't want to make this meeting fast, um Timmy. You're okay with this? Because I thought twenty eighth street court, you wanted to embargo back here, so we're gonna. We're gonna shade the map for future of something we don't ever actually want to happen?
His answer would be yes. You're doing fine.
So. I, I don't think there's actually a risk to that of this, but you do have to allow hotels somewhere in the township.
Right.
Here they are.
The ones I'm counting in my head, I'm sure there's probably one or two I'm missing.
Um, next.
What if we said you could have a hotel on one of the eight properties that are already hotels? There you go. So you can buy one of theirs and then tear it down and rebuild.
So the next designation on the list is the Centennial Park Mixed Use, so that's going to be shaded in that uh very light. Purpley pink color um in the image on the bottom, um existing land uses include Office Park, miss, mixed density residential, senior housing. Um, future land uses or appropriate future land uses, um and this designation would include the same. Land uses, um but likely greater need for more residential than office, given um the need for residential in general. And uh also previous discussions that appears that folks are interested in residential in that area as well.
Do you want to say anything about uh buildable height there?
That's on the next slide.
Next slide.
Yep, uh so building height, two and a half stories, um with again, the density bonuses up to four stories would be uh allowable. Residential du- density uh with a six units per acre. Um, maximum by hi- uh by right, and then again, offering those density bonuses up to eight units per acre. Um, however, please note that the current overlay district does allow up to twelve.
We're gonna dig into this in the next time you're here, as part of it.
The, the Centennial in general? Well, I mean, we can, yeah.
Yeah, let's put that as part of that package.
Okay.
Everybody can really give some thought as to like the big silver gold, like what, what do we want to offer? Uh, and what do we want?
We're, we're playing a couple of lists of things that you may.
We'll come with the list too.
We'll put something on the screen if you can have it, and we'll just, and we'll work it with Drew it. And we'll say silver, gold, not above this, we don't care, it's required, everyone has to do it, right? These are all categories.
I'd be interested in, in what the trade's been in your, in your previous experience with other clients.
That's a good question.
What the developer reaction is or?
No, what, what's the trade for going silver?
Yeah, what have other clients said is silver and gold?
That'd be helpful. If we had that in advance, that'd be helpful.
Um, these, and uh if you could please advance the slide. I believe this is the last mixed use designation, the Four Corners area. Existing lane uses include retail, office, hotel, light industrial, residential under construction. And future lane uses include the same lane uses, but likely greater need for residential than.
Yeah, there's your hotel, right there, you can put it there, yeah.
Um, if you could please advance the slide. Um, building height up to three stories maximum, and then of course, the density bonuses um would allow up to five. Um, and then residential density, um a maximum of eight units per acre by right, but up to ten units per acre could be. Um, allowed or awarded per the um density bonus uh details programming. Um, okay, so. To get further into that discussion, um next meeting, what we would like to, to um have a good creative discussion on. Um, is going to be centered around this density bonus system and what that may or may not look like. Um, what qualifies for density bonuses? What funds? Could a developer pay into? What does the township want to see as a result of these bonuses? Um, could it be green space for preservation or condos for sale, um onsite amenities such as swimming pools or walking trails or. Pickleball courts or, you know, you name it, um preserve green space um or unit quality or size um increase. Um, and how many checkboxes to qualify for the bonus? Is it a point system? What does that checklist look like? Um, and then how to implement this bonus system. So as Chris mentioned, we'll do our homework and put together. Um, essentially a packet for you guys of what that bonus system may look like for different ideas, and then we can kind of workshop that together to right size what. Makes sense for Cascade Township.
Hey Matty, why don't we look at the thirteenth as a date to get them back if that works for you all? Yeah, we, remember we were gonna move the twentieth meeting to the thirteenth? If you're gonna. What's that? That would be a question for you.
Yeah, we moved that, so we've got November thirteen, December four and December eighteen are the regularly scheduled meetings left. And right, you, then you guys could always do a special work session or something if you wanted to.
We cut, let's see, I mean, two weeks, not nine? Everybody good with that? Get them back here in the thirteenth, see what we can accomplish.
At, at the risk of my farmland preservation subcommittee co-members throwing something at me. We saw a cool presentation this past week, um and as long as you're gonna go back and look. At kind of what you've recommended other places, could you look at Grattan Township's? PUD in their bonus system for this preservation contribution?
And we can, we can send that document to them, the one that we received.
You know what I'm saying? Wouldn't it be smart for them to look at that a little bit?
Brian, I was gonna ask if at, at some point, maybe as we get closer. To developing something there, since it seems like we bring up a lot of subcommittee stuff in here before we've hashed through all the details and then it becomes policy. Before we've really worked it all out. Should they be attending some of those meetings or is it? It's depends if they like seven thirty AM meetings or not, when you guys always like to meet.
Meetings, uh.
Or you could, or you could find one specific.
Sorry, some of us have jobs outside of our township meetings that are every day.
Maybe you could find, you know, put that on the agenda for a specific subcommittee meeting too.
Right.
Yeah, we have actually talked about that it probably would be advantageous for one of us to attend one of those meetings, even if it's. Um, so just say the word and, you know, we're working with township staff to figure out our contract and all of that stuff, because we've got a lot of. Things floating around right now, so we're gonna, we're working with Jay to like sort it all out, so.
Township uh ordinance?
They haven't yet. No, we can send that to them.
It is, it's very interesting.
It is. I think it's probably the, the direction that we will probably move towards, pivot towards, but.
It's worked well for them.
Yeah.
That's great.
Right, we, we, one of the implementation tasks that's gonna have to happen here is the PUD amendments. Because so much of that groundwork is already approved for PUDs, so all the changes we're talking about aren't gonna take effect. If we're developer comes in, I should just change what's going on, which will have. Especially in some of the areas we targeted where the existing land use is not market. But uh it's not even an overnight thing, and that, but that also reduces the, you know, concern about hotels. Right? It's like, well, hotels will all fine until the developer wants to come in and change things, then they start. So, um, just want to point that out, that, that this is not, we can just change its own ordinance. So it's gonna be, we're in a fairly intensive set of PUD amendments instructions. As part of this master plan, so that ten point issue, I'll be like, oh, that's what you're just doing.
It's Chris and Daniel, thank you so much.
Um, if I could get that flash drive back when we could.
Absolutely can.
Is that something we have access to now?
This presentation?
Yes.
Uh, I will send it to staff. It was too large of a file.
Oh, okay. That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Okay, move to article nine, old business, new old business. Very none will move to article ten, any other business. Like to acknowledge Mr. Hildebrand will be leaving us after tonight. While I'm not excited about where he's going, I understand the need to go, uh as a, a father with young children, I can appreciate. That uh time at night is of a premium. And Mr. Hildebrands hasn't had much with his, so um. We hate to see you leave, but uh at least I understand it, um. And I, I want to commend you because I don't think we're gonna have surprises uh much like we did with your predecessor. Uh, with administrative approvals, uh Brian has done a fantastic job at partnering. Uh, with myself and with Scott when he was the chair. Um, the administrative approvals didn't happen without a discussion, and I think that is a huge leap from where we were. And uh certainly would like to recognize him for that, so. Um, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
If I may, oh, go ahead, Joe. I just gonna say, uh, I really enjoyed working with Brian when he, when he stepped in to the role he's in now and uh. I, I uh look forward to the opportunity of him helping to bridge the divide. Um, or the, the wound, he'll help heal the wound, if you will, between us and, and where he's going, so. Um, I look forward to that, but uh we'll certainly miss you here. Yeah, thank you for your service to the citizens of Cascade, although they probably don't know or appreciate what you did, we, we do, so, thank you.
You've done a great job as a planner for Cascade Township. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you, everyone. It's been, yeah, a great time working here and you do have a lot of exciting things going on still and I'm. Sure I'll see you all here and there, so thank you for all that. It's been a delight, Brian.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Matty, get ready.
Yeah, Matty. New meat for the meat grinder.
So you get to sit over there then now? Or how's that gonna work? I'll have to get you a longer wire.
But the good news is we get to get you an assistant now.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, there's only one, Matty.
We have anybody online in terms of visitors? Pass through that, right here, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
No.
Member Engel made the motion, um member Rishi supporter, all those favorite to say aye?
Aye.